Everyone's got minutes. Both from the executive meeting. I've got this, uh, discussion made. So I never prepared for much of that. I'll make a motion if that's the minute. May, I'll second it. Second of the day, all favor?
I, I oppose.
For the planes, I think there can has plans to also, for the fast, uh, also, and thing also.
That's most different.
Second? Second of the day, all favor?
I, I, I oppose.
Personally, I want to turn this over to Phil as far as the special ordinance for the park that Hunter's Crossing.
Yeah, let me bring that up. Uh, the, uh, Board of Public Works and Safety met, uh, two weeks ago and based upon the recommendation, uh, the Chief of Police, uh, the Street Department and the Fire Department recommended that there be some no parking on various sides of some of the streets that haven't been marked yet in the Hunter's Crossing. So there's four streets there in the proposed ordinance that's, uh, been recommended by Board of Public Works and Safety. On Stellar Way, there's no, they're recommending no parking on the north side between Chestnut and the cul-de-sac on the west side of Stellar Way. On Hunter's Crossing Pass, no parking on the west side from Stellar Way to Raider Court. And on Raider Court, no parking on the north side from The House Trail to the cul-de-sac on the east end. And then on The House Trail, no parking on the west side from Stellar Way to Raider Court. Again, these are based on recommendations of the Chief, uh, Chief of Police, the Park Department Chief, and the Street Department.
That would be two thousand twenty-one dash five, bill five.
Can I make a regular suggestion? Uh, I just drove out there today and I drove down there and I came off of Progressive Parkway and drove down to Hunter's Crossing Pass. That's the first street that needs for construction and everything. And at the moment, the houses are built, they're normal facing that road. And I know that's the construction interest too. I was going, can we postpone this one to make it go parking on both sides? But I hate to postpone because you need the, the trucks to come in to unload and offload. It's just, I wish you guys would drive down and look at it. I, I understand the ones in front of the houses and that's what the subdivision people always requested. And I said, that's fine. But if you go into the, like I said, off of the Progressive Parkway and drive down to that subdivision, I think it'd benefit right now and just, oh, I hate the markets saying no parking because you want the construction people to offload their stuff and whatever. So can we wait on that or can we postpone that or can we?
Which, which street is the construction part?
It's, that's, that's the, uh, Hunter's Crossing Pass.
Okay.
So if, you know, and there, you know, there's no homes up on, on the south side of that. So that's why I'm saying if, if you already put no parking on one side or the other, you know that, but if you already posted, see, we can't enforce it anyway at the moment until we take that street over, really. Um, so I was gonna see if it's something we can relook at that street in the future or I hate to go ahead and have it all signed up already.
Don't go away, just leave that part off. But anyway, that's, and then you'll, you had it there later. Can we bring it back?
I think that, I think we did that Stellar Way actually allowed no parking and the Neighborhood Association came in and asked for that. If you could do this the same way, not allow the parking there, but consider there's no houses facing that street.
Well, all the houses face north against south against all these other streets and that's fine. But that street, if, I drove up when a car come down and I said, that'd be, especially with construction now. I was, I was thinking, I hate to put signing up one side or another or no parking on either side. If you just wait, don't sign it at all, maybe it's just an idea. You know, it's, it's wait until they get more houses in there, so let's, can we look at that street later? Just an idea.
The Department, the Council can always bring it back and add that as another street if you choose later.
But if we ask to take that one street off the ordinance?
The ordinance hasn't been introduced, so it doesn't require amendment. It just requires a correction. I mean, I have to correct that page and, you know, before we start it. So when the house is built, we can take a look at it.
It might be a safety issue too, so if I'm gonna kid, run that along.
Cause it'll, it's, I know it's major in and out of there and I can't just, I said, before we do anything to it, I think, let's take it and look at it. Especially after the house was built.
So you'll make that a motion?
I'll make that a motion if I could.
Not sure on, well, you don't wanna make, you don't wanna, you don't wanna act on anything on it right now? Or you don't, you don't want any parking on it at all?
There's gotta be parking for the, I would say for construction. I hate to, I hate to put signs on it. I hate to label it either way at one point because we still got construction on it.
And you're just talking about the one street?
Yeah, just that one.
Just that one. Just Hunter's Crossing Pass. Just Hunter's Crossing Pass. You just wanna strike it from the ordinance?
Yes.
Well, Paul, I'm somewhat familiar with your neighborhood. I have a couple of daughters that live out there.
So what, Hunter's Crossing Pass is the one that runs, uh, Stellar, which is the original road all the way up to the bypass road.
That's correct.
Correct? And so what it's saying here, cause if I'm understanding it right, it's only, it's only from Stellar to Raider, which is that, it's just one block of that.
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah.
One block. So, so it's not the rest of the construction part now? No parking on one block on the west side only?
Yeah, so if you come in from Chestnut Street, you're on Stellar. You go all the way, almost to the cul-de-sac and take a left on The House. Take a first left, you're on Raider. Come back and take a left and you're back on Hunter's Crossing Pass. But as I'm reading it, it's just that one block between Stellar and Raider that the no parking for now is gonna be applied. And so from, from Raider, which is the newest street that's been fully filled in now, from Raider all the way up to the bypass, this isn't addressing that.
That's true. That's, that's what I did. But I did go on both sides of that, but will you want to go ahead and make it, just that little section only or not do it at all until?
Oh, you're talking about that one block then?
I'm talking about all of it. Cause this is all gonna come up. I'm, you're right, this is only for that one block section.
Okay. So at that one, why couldn't we go ahead and do that, leave the ordinance as it is and then address that once? The construction is over? Is that what you, that what you're asking?
I guess that's the only way to look at it. I guess we can change down the road if we decide, change it all and park on both sides of the road.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
But I did, I did go on to say it was from that little section, but I looked at it all the way through to the intersection, but I know it's something going on at time.
Oh, so, well, okay, so you're, you're saying from, um, Stellar?
Right.
All the way up to the bypass road, to leave that unaddressed? So no, no no parking signs on that road at all for now? It's not, it's not?
That's, it's not wide enough for parking on both sides.
No.
It's not, I think I'm gonna have to restrict it.
Yeah. They just?
Where, where there's houses, you're gonna have to restrict it. Where there's no houses, we could wait until it's out.
Yeah.
That was, that was the Fire Department and the Police Chief and Street Department that's concerned is that, you know, where there are houses, it's gotta be no parking on one or the other side.
Right.
So the street's, right, the street's not, uh, wide enough.
Okay.
For emergency vehicles, if there's parking on both sides.
Okay.
And it's, and it's not, it's not too much of a concern where there's no houses.
Yeah.
But where there are houses, it's a concern.
Okay. And if I, if I remember right, um, we had a meeting out there shortly after the first you have, the first street, Stellar, was completed. And the city wants to have one side of the street, no parking ever. During the day, overnight, no, no cars parked on this side of the street. The ones we're addressing in this ordinance, ever. But there also is, um, in the HOA, there's no overnight parking. And they, they're actually say there's no parking on the other side of the street too, but it's up to the HOA to force that. So like if somebody having a party or has some family come over for the afternoon, they, the HOA says they can park on the other side of the street, but the side that the city's saying no parking is supposed to stay no parking ever all day long, all the time. So that if an emergency vehicle had to come in there, they wouldn't be squeezed down to two little, uh, space for the trucks or whatever.
Well, I'm sorry, the curves and terms and stuff like that. I don't think that was a, so we're pretty good.
Anyway, I think, I think that, that's back to the HOA that force the other side of the street. But the one side that we're talking about, we want to stay no parking all the time. Even temporary parking, you don't want somebody pulling in there and blocking the road in case there's an emergency.
Well, I don't, that's, that's the way I remember it. I'm sorry, that's what I'm saying. I don't know if that's what, so. I think they're, and I think they're addressing the first block because of making the swing, the corner of the big fire. I thought that's me, what I remember from Jason that I met. Because you gotta, you gotta make that corner. Corner of Stellar and from the bypass, the first, not bypass, the first block there. Yeah, you gotta make that corner. After that, you have to get straightened out and it's not so bad. Making the corner.
Okay. Well, I guess we can go a time. I know it's, it's right there, but I think.
There was a motion, so you were drawing a motion?
Outward, yeah.
This makes you hurt emotion.
The emotion and the emotion.
So with that, then we'll take a vote on the ordinance, so I guess, uh.
You gotta introduce some numbers.
Number, which is two, two hundred and fifty-five.
I should just clarify, we're introducing it, but we're not actually.
You, you can tell us tonight if you want, but first let me introduce.
We're introducing it first. I want everybody to do some pass up the same time.
Spin a little bit.
Are you, is it, is it open?
Are you satisfied, Ken, so do you wanna look at that again?
Well, I just want, you guys to go ahead. It's down in the future, I just, that's okay.
Okay.
Can we choose it? Or we can choose to introduce it?
I'm sorry, we introduce it tonight, I pass it, and then give some next meeting pass. Yeah, I can all like to pick it up.
Still would, still would it be better for us to, to introduce it or to table it?
Well, if you, if you introduce it tonight and then decide you want to change it, then of course you, you have to amend it at that point. But if you table it now and take a look at it and, and then you can, you can be changed without amendment. You know, the change you wanna make can be changed without amendment. But it, it doesn't matter. I'll do, I can do it either way. It's, it's maybe a little bit of work for me and for Tom.
If you, if you amend it or it's after it's introduced.
You know?
So would it be better to table it and just, just make a vote on it next week, next meeting? And then then we can do it?
I would, I would make a motion on two thousand twenty-one dash five to table it. And I'm making my motion.
I was saying, that's not, it's not a, yeah, I didn't know.
No, not in. We're tableing a discussion on the market street, uh, on the, on the parking on this Hunter's Crossing.
Yeah. And, and if you ever get chance before the next meeting, just drive down and look at that street. Maybe you can, yeah, but, yeah, the other, the other street, okay? I'm gonna comment.
So we're, we're tableing the discussion. Cause that's what I called it, I had a discussion. That motion's tabled. So I'll go have a second.
I'll second.
All favor?
I, I oppose.
It's favor. I think that's better than really good understanding what you're talking about.
And I might just see a little bit of something different if you guys see it next time. I just.
I don't know, that's, that's a hurry to do it at this meeting. I mean, it's not had any signage for. Feeling good to help, but I'm personally ready to mix and adjust if you catch me to go all parking. So yeah, as soon as we crack that, then in another two weeks, I'm gonna. Table, and table might want to give them.
Yeah.
Signs, signs.
I did talk to, I think the video that lives out there and they asked, like, whatever new signs they could, like no parking could be, could they make the sign, no parking this side instead of just like there? Because that's where somebody might think, no parking on, I got someone. And that's what they're, I think.
We're gonna, clarify with, with.
That's, that's what they, they're asking, what night?
Okay, the next thing I have on the, just a little update as far as market street things do, uh, you know, the PSF design and the production, the design, the special, the market street part. Uh, we're trying to try to narrow down as few cost factors as we have on the floor, making sure that progress inside the site as well. And let me say to you what the progress is. They did start surveying today, uh, at that area, so that's already the process to do that part of it. Uh, and so that's really, we got the report surveying today, we kind of just got all that, you know, that is, that is, so it's like, we're gonna go in. Uh, the park is still a norm in it, uh, the shelter house, some sort of, the building, whatever you like, still a norm in it. Uh, there's, so we've done, maybe some inspections, we just do how much quality to go. And that, I make sure it's on its package, right? And that is the job that probably, that is the question, too. And then, just they have to, it's more than that, so. But that, that's, but the other thing, as far as the sun up here, that I discovered this afternoon, basically the yard up there closing, unfortunately, she property on February the third. Uh, so that's gonna be, uh, so I should, I should, I should, I should say what's that?
All right, John, you're off.
You have any counsel?
I'm done.
Yeah. Start with, on the gas side. I did install two new services, got ten on file, and they're gonna be ready to be installed. Two of the crew members are doing their online testing, which, uh, over three years. They're gonna do testing, but one of them's doing eighty-nine tests, the other one's doing a ninety-three test. Each test takes about a half hour, forty-five minutes to do. At the end of that, they gotta test, they gotta take, they gotta pass. Seventy percent are better. They got three chances to pass it. If not, we gotta call USDA over in Illinois and they gotta reset the, uh, computer so they can take it again. But usually, I have to, it'll take three tries. But it does take some time when they're doing that many tests, but it is required by the, uh, federal. So two of them been doing that, that leaves just one guy, uh, left. So, you know, he's been out doing some small maintenance on the meters, going out and checking the meter conditions on the houses. Uh, there's not a whole lot you can do with it just by himself. But they are trying to get that all finished up. Usually takes about a whole month or two all them tests. Uh, they go take it and it's kinda hard on their eyes when they're doing that many at once. So they are working on that. The county is gonna replace the bridge culvert, or, uh, the Wayside Road where it meets the old Holland Road, that Y there. Just pass that to the west. County's gonna be closing the road. They're gonna be replacing that bridge culvert. That's where our six inch or a four inch high pressure main runs. Runs on top of the pipe. Uh, so they did have us bring our back machine out. We backed down to it. We discovered it was a six inch pipe. Uh, if you remember Phil, years ago, we went through that ordeal where, uh, the US, uh, I U R C wanted to see some documents on that four inch pipe. It's like six and a half miles and for some reason, you know, we couldn't, uh, come up with the documents on that piece of pipe. So they made us bore holes every four hundred feet for six and a half miles. Take measurements at the thickness of the pipe to verify it, cause it only weighs two hundred pounds in it. In the meantime, and in the winter time, we need it, we need it up to four hundred. So we had to do all in backs, go down, measure the pipes, document all that. And Phil and I and Greg, we all had booked I U R C before the committee, telling what we did to get their approval to raise it up to four hundred. Uh, that's all four inch steel high pressure. Like I said, we backed down, we found a six inch pipe. So once we found that, we had to find the ends, or we had to find what was going on there. Was it actually a piece of the gas main or was it a sleeve? Uh, we kinda figured it was a sleeve for the four inch. Uh, it walked across that bridge a bunch, so we took our back machine back out. We did some backing on the ends. We did find an end. Did discover that was a, a sleeve that the four inch was slid through back in ninety-two, I think, when they put it in. But when you run your gas main to a sleeve like that, you're supposed to put spacers so the pipe is not rubbing on the sleeve. But we didn't find that. We found at the end of it's kinda, uh, rubbing on the six inch. So what we have to do is we're gonna have to go find the other end. Then when the state or the county digs it up, they'll have the road closed. We have to go in there, we have to grind that. We estimate it's about a thirty foot piece. So we're gonna have to grind that six inch pipe off that four inch. And then we're gonna have to inspect the pipe to make sure there's no wear marks on it or it's gonna be in good condition. And once we find that, uh, we're gonna have to rock it, wrap it with Rock Shield. And, uh, then they can put it back, then they can go ahead and put the bridge culvert in. And we're, we're gonna be out there when they do it, just to make sure it doesn't get damaged. But that's, it'll be a little involvement, but it's gotta be done. At least we find it wasn't a six inch sliced into a four inch. Then we would've had to do some more documentation on it. But we are gonna have to remove it. We can't torch it off, so we're gonna have to grind it. That's gonna take a little while. Have it in. And then we do have, I did get quotes for the brush clearing and small trees along our gas main. Uh, there's four areas that are gonna be cleared so we can do our leaks, annual leak survey. There's three quotes, the lowest one. You can see there's quite a difference in the three. I'd get approval for the lower one for five thousand, eighty dollars. I have to be awarded to poling or brush cutting and excavating. I think the reason the other two are so high, they have to rent the equipment to get the job done. For the one with the lowest, uh, quote, he has the equipment, he owns the equipment. So therefore he can afford, give a little cheaper price. Three of the four areas are along, uh, State Rightway, the old two thirty-one going to Jasper. So we are, and actually their rightway overlaps are rightway, or, or easements. Should be, we're in the clear there.
Do you expect that after staying, or is it?
Yeah. Yeah, we'll go out and inspect it.
You need a motion to pay. A lot of the, involved, any questions about the brush clearing?
I'll make a motion to approve on the brush cutting, excavating, five thousand eighty dollars.
Okay. All favor?
I, I follow.
For the electric department. The three services in, two of them were in Hunter's Crossing. They got two houses built in Hunter's Crossing, three now, so it's moving right along. Uh, we did install a safety rail on our garage where our bucket trucks are stored. I included a couple of pictures. That building's like a hundred years old. It's like a four foot. There's a four foot ledge there. Parked trucks, and nobody fell off it in a hundred years, but it only takes one person.
It only takes one guy.
Yeah. Uh, our sa- safety director came in and, uh, he went over it with us. We, according to OSHA standards, anything forty-eight inches or higher has to have a rail. Measured it, measured it forty-five inches. So he said, well, legally, you don't have to put one there, but I figured if you fall off at three inches, ain't gonna make much difference in four feet. So during the winter, during some rainy days, the guy's got some, had some spare pipe laying around. So they come up with a design, you can see the welds. So they installed that. And today they put a primer on it and they're gonna, uh, paint it yellow. And we do have a section where you can take it out if we get pallets of stock in, or, uh, get it unloaded. But that was a nice little project that you did. Man, it's a lot safer now. And I see it eats, and then they set five new poles on County Road eleven hundred south, headed into St. Henry. We got one more to set tomorrow. And that, uh, where County Road two hundred meets eleven hundred. Uh, if we get that one set tomorrow, we'll probably, we'll pretty well be done setting poles all the way to St. Henry. So all them poles are gonna be in excellent shape from now on. And they did some tree trimming on some single tap lines, uh, in between setting poles. And I'd like to discuss the transformer purchase agreement with the EMA. I did include, a quote. About two years ago, EMA, they got sixty-one communities. Uh, they got with some transformer companies. They did some research on the different companies, which transformer would be better. Uh, they, let's say they analyzed them all. There's Cooper, there's several brands out there. They got with the salesman. They come up with an agreement that EMA would try to have all their communities buy transformers from, uh, through EMA, which EMA buys Armco, uh, out of Darr, Tennessee. And actually, we've been buying Armco transformers for about fifteen years now. And we've had excellent luck with them. They're usually the cheapest because that's all they make, is transformers. Uh, where you got Cooper, you got ABV, you got GE, but they make different, uh, different, uh, hardware. But Armco just makes strictly transformers. So I got with EMA and we got some quotes. As you can see, the KVA, it goes from twenty-five hundred down to fifty, or down to twenty-five. The top three are three-phase transformers. The bottom two are residential transformers. The bottom, the residential transformers are not over five thousand, so we don't go out and get quotes for that. So we usually buy the Armcos as we need them, and we usually keep some in stock. Three phases are over five thousand, so go out, get three bids, come to council, approve the lowest one. And Armco has been the lowest all the time. So if we would go through EMA to buy the transformers, it's the same brand. On them five transformers, we would save an extra fifty-five hundred dollars. And the gentleman from EMA said, the more transformers the community buy through EMA, through Armco, the price will, uh, the in, the increase won't be as steep or a bit cheap, uh, price go down. But the problem not gonna go down, it's just not gonna go up as much.
The volume, the, the volume when we reflect on the price.
Yeah.
More volume.
The more EMA gets communities buying through them, the better price they're gonna get for their transformers. Right now, Tell City, there's Richmond, Tell City, Lawrenceburg, there's about seven or eight communities that are on this program. Uh, so, discuss, see what the council thinks. My question, Phil, would be, if we kinda proved going through EMA, would we still have to go out and get three quotes on the large transformers?
Did you, were these quotes here? Or did you obtain these quotes?
Yes.
And then you've already got? But I actually, you got, you got three quotes.
At, at each time.
Twenty each time?
Yeah, each time.
Uh, you'd have to demonstrate that there's a statement. I mean, you're, you're excluded from using the bidding process over five thousand dollars. If, if you can, if the council approves it because there's a demonstrable opportunity to save significant, significant amount of money. Now, we don't know every time whether there's gonna be this kind of statement, we assume there is.
Yeah. That's what.
I, I think you just need to bring it back to council to go buy a twenty-seven thousand on you. You need to bring it back to council, show that it's still EMA's, still cheaper.
Okay, so I'd still, we'd still have to go out.
Yeah.
We used to get the three quotes and then bring it to council. Instead of, if I'd need to buy a transformer for five thousand, come to the council and say, hey, I wanna buy a, you know, three hundred KVA through EMA for eighty-six hundred dollars. That wouldn't suffice. I'd still have to go out and get three quotes.
Instead of, they have to show that it's, yeah, that it's cheaper than the other.
Okay.
I mean, we don't know that, I mean, we assume it's always gonna be cheaper, but.
Okay, that's just what I wanted to clarify. So, well, probably, like, the smaller ones will probably contain, oh, we'll start buying them from IMPA. But, you know, as you can see, the bottom two, there's still savings there.
This could not, could this be bid? Could this be put in the annual bid?
Could do that, yeah.
You put it in the annual bid, then you have to do it once a year.
Yeah.
Am I thinking, am I doing that right, Kyle?
Yeah, but, but I don't know if you're certain, if you know what you're gonna need.
Well, as soon as there's only so many different bear or.
Right. The, with the copper prices and everything, the price is gonna fluctuate quite a bit in a year's time.
The county may not be willing to hold that bid, okay? EMA may not be willing to hold that bid, okay?
No, they may not, yeah, they can't play.
Yeah, they won't, they won't hold that price, they won't hold that price for a year.
I'm just, I was just about, but, but, uh, steel prices, anytime you're dealing metal.
Steel and copper, aluminum.
Any kind of here commodities, their, their price fluctuates.
All wood.
Wood.
Daily, right, wood, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor.
Hourly.
Then yesterday I received a memo from, uh, actually EMA. Transformers that they buy, which Ermco, which are the ones we buy. They got a notice yesterday that the lead times has really been pushed out a lot, real far. For the small transformers, which are residential, it's an eight-month lead time now. So if I order residential transformers, the small twenty-five and fifty KVA, so if you're looking at eight months out. The three-phase is five months, and they expect this to be for the whole year of twenty-twenty-one. So if I order a transformer now, I won't expect to get it for probably five months. If I order a residential transformer now, I can't expect it for probably eight months. We have Hunter's Crossing three, we got Stein Kemp's, the gold, uh, Chestnut Gardens. Coming up, luckily, we had enough in stock, we got a lot in my supply yard down there to cover them. But it makes you look a little farther out if you need to order transformers. Maybe try calling another town, but they're gonna be reluctant to let one go, they know the lead times like that. You may call and get a different brand, but it's gonna cost you a lot more, but you may not have a choice. But the lead, like I said, the lead times is on way out now with the, you say the shortage of supplies with the COVID. Uh, just, the lead time is way out there.
I don't think that, that's a common, I'm here, I'm here now on steel and other things, too.
Yeah.
Does it, they actually have any inventory anywhere, or are they just buying, or they can go just in the middle of the?
They're just a.
The savings is significant, I love to pay your membership impacts.
Yeah.
So, like, that's a big plus.
Membership to IMPA.
Do you earn any of your benefits, so you get on the list?
I haven't, I just got the notice yesterday, that's the lead time, but that's why I always kept on the large three-phase transformers. Always kept spares down at our yard. But I knew the lead time was usually, usually about two months on three-phase, now it's pushed out to five months. Uh, we usually kept a good supply of the residential transformers down there. But now it's pushed out to eight months. But I do have enough to cover the, in the near future, the residential, uh, supply.
You know those are going out, but do you want us to go and just order them out and replace them?
We can.
You know what I mean, it's like a, through the, 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 uh, we're not, we're not going out with electric business.
No. And like I say, for a business to, new business to come in town that needs a three-phase transformer.
Can't wait, eight months.
Might have one in stock, but it, the one I got in stock is probably a backup for.
Somebody else.
Somebody else, so then, that's kinda something we gotta really watch.
So, so I guess my question, so do we want to go ahead and, and do that and order, and if that's the, for you all, but, I mean, if, if, to be direct. Once you have the table down, it's gonna cover us, the faucets and whatever else we already got, the faucets.
Yeah.
Do we have enough to cover the, the new stuff, and maybe the next eight months, or five months, or six months, and then it happens to be, if something happens to go out?
And say, maybe if we come down, we have to use our backups, and then if something goes out, something goes down on us, we can have a backup, so.
Do we give permission to go ahead and order more?
Well, we can, I can go get some quotes and then come back.
Bring it back.
Next month, we're.
I think I bring it back.
I think I, if, if you have the money, which I know you do, and if that's the case, I would, it, it, hey. Yeah. It's normally, when we come.
Yeah.
And we can have, and this, for, are these quotes current, uh, which you've already got?
Uh, it's just for one, I mean.
Well, yeah, but what I'm saying is.
You didn't have the specific quotes of all the ones in your order?
No, I, I just, I just ran them, I just picked three of them out, get, three kinda different sizes.
Yeah, probably oughta pick out what you know you're gonna.
Like the three hundred and the five hundred. I got a quote on the one twenty-two oh eight voltage, where I may need to, three and five hundred, two seventy-seven, four eighty volts.
Yeah.
Uh, we just kinda randomly picked three. I'll actually go back and see what we need, and we'll get, we can get some quotes on that.
We can just probably get out of here.
We haven't even moved for that, have we?
No.
Okay.
We're just kinda.
About mine, but I remember bringing this every time I mail it.
Yeah. But we're in, short term, we're in a good shape. Uh, also, in the package is solar agreements between the water treatment plant and IMPA. They need to be signed and sent back to EMA. Uh, shortly it'll be coming online. I do have. Included the three sets of agreements. But all three sets need to be signed and sent to, up to EMA, uh. Two of them are agreements between the city and the seller, which would be the water plant, and then one is between the water plant and EMA. But EMA requires all three of them to be on the file, signed.
Yeah, so, so one of them is, the first one is an interconnection agreement between the city and the customer, which is the water. So that's a agreement between the city and, and the water utility, member wants a copy of that. It provides for all the necessary safety, you know, connections and requirements and specifications for safety. Then there's the application by the customer, the water department, for the interconnection. And that provides all the information down the east, and I suppose EMA needs it as well. And then there's an agreement between the customer and EMA, where EMA agrees to buy their excess generation monthly, based upon their usage, whether we get back in the system. And so, um, utility boy actually needs to approve these agreements on behalf, not only on behalf of the electric department, but also on behalf of the water department. As you see, uh, in Gary's items, he has that same request.
Yeah, I just included all three, it's, I mean, Gary's gonna have it in his, I put them all three together.
Trying to make more, you know, through the, the agreements?
There was a, there was a concern right at first. Uh, when I got the prints on where they, they were gonna connect the solar field. A lot of times they connect them on the customer side of the main. So on this installation, they wanna go straight into our transformer. It concerned me at first, I called EMA and wanted their pros and cons of it. And they said, they advised against it. Uh, I kinda asked why, what's, why are they against it? If something malfunctioned in the solar field, it would go back straight to the transformer, maybe damaged the transformer. Uh, that's about all they gave me. So I decided to call, but we usually, sometimes, we, we buy transformers, we send all our, uh, bad transformers that we replace, or get damaged, or they burn up. We sent them to Solomon Corporation in Kansas. I called there, talked to their engineer. Pros and cons of hooking it up straight into the transformer. He said, it, uh, probably burned your transformer up. So he kinda went into detail on what happens. He said, and he said, the, uh, the inverters that these solar companies use, cause on your solar panels, the voltage is DC. It goes into an inverter, converts it to AC, goes into an isolation transformer, which matches our voltage in our system. And it goes into a disconnect switch and then into our system. He said, what happens, uh, he called them dirty, dirty inverters. He said, what happens, it puts harmonics, it throws harmonics back on your system. And he goes, you have harmonics go back on your system, it heats your windings up. And then it eventually burns your transformer up, or it will mess your electronics up. Electronics in the water department, the transformer, uh, expensive. So he kinda went into detail, and I kinda read up on it. So then I called Ermco, where we use to buy our transformers. I said, uh, have you, and somebody called down, knows the transformer, and they know there's a solar installation gonna be on it. He said, they usually build a transformer with electrostatic shielding, which it shields the windings in the transformer that will shield off the harmonics that is imposed on it. Our transformers don't have that. He said, it's an issue, it's a fairly new issue they've come across, uh, with all, more and more solar coming on. So. Uh, I feel still a little nervous, but after I went out and talked to the solar tech, with the solar company out the water plant, uh, when I mentioned it, he knew exactly what I was talking about. And he said, their inverters, they got top-of-the-line inverters. He said, we'll take a harmonic reading before and after, and he said that, rest assured, that there's not gonna be a lot of harmonics thrown on our, side of our equipment. So after kinda talking with him, I'm more at ease, I feel confident that we won't have any problems. So I gave him, go ahead, go ahead and hook it into our side on the transformer. So we're gonna meet probably, like, next week, Gary, we're gonna hook that in. So we're gonna shut the transformer down, they're gonna have to, we're gonna do some meter wiring in it, and they're gonna hook their solar system up to it. And then we're gonna throw it back online, and it should be good to go, but, well, I, I think they're a pretty reputable company. Uh, they're based out of Carmel, Indiana. And that's a pretty high-class community, so I feel pretty confident with that company.
They're gonna guarantee it, right?
They pretty well.
So he said there's no problem?
He said, he set my ease at mind when I was talking to him.
So how does that lead back into your back of the transformer for that whole thing?
But we do have an issue, we know where to look, the probable cause. Cause when I talked to the guy, and, and actually this summer, we had a transformer burn up. Or EMA had a transformer burn up, our solar field that EMA installed, uh, four years ago. Transformer burned up out there, and I was talking, this summer, I was, when I was out there talking to him, they said it's about the third one. Transformer they've had go bad in the solar parks that they have put in. And I never did hear a reason why, but then I was talking to Solomon out in Kansas. He said, yeah, there was a guy from EMA last fall that called, and was asking the same questions that you were asking. About the electrostatic shielding. And, uh, so evidently, they're looking into it too. But like Ermco said, if they know there's a solar installation going on in transformer, they'll electrostatically shield it. But you won't have no problem then. Then it may come a time where that'd be a, that'd be a feature that's automatically put in these transformers. But right now, none of ours are electrostatically shielded.
So with a home unit, do you have the same issue?
It's just, mainly just large scale. Cause I asked him about the smaller ones. He said, you got a smaller house, you, you got one inverter. But that's, uh, a, a small inverter. Well, at the water plant, you got four, uh, sixty, sixty amp, four of them out there, it's a larger s- scale. But I think in the last few years, they've probably, uh, improved the inverters. But for a company that buys off-brand or, uh, these cheaper inverters, then you may have a problem with harmonics. But I feel pretty comf- I feel comfortable with hooking it up to our side, I don't think we'll have a problem.
What's the alternative?
Alternative?
That might have a similar field.
Uh, just a transformer with electrostatic shielding, size of the, uh, water plant uses, we got a quote, I got a quote with the electrostatic shielding in it, just to see, it's twenty thousand dollars.
You feel a problem with this, I'm gonna close you if it's about a problem, though.
And while I'm gonna go out, when he hooks it in, we're gonna take some harmonic readings. But I feel, after talking to him, I feel comfortable.
Before and after, I think, huh?
Is that?
They're gonna take harmonics before and after.
And see, in, probably in two years, we'll have this same episode, probably gonna happen down at the wastewater plant. But, so, if some electronics starts going bad in Gary's water plant, or the transformer burns up. I don't know, anybody knows what harmonics, you understand harmonics?
It's all you do.
Well, it's the same thing, like two motors running at different speeds, right? Similar, could you do the difference, the vibration of it?
It's like you say, and I always describe it as a vibration.
That's a, what they call, uh, T H D, total harmonic distortion. And what it is, is it starts the sine wave, cause you got sixty hertz, and our United States, we run sixty hertz. Well, overseas, it's fifty hertz, sixty hertz. What that is, that sine wave makes a three sixty, uh, makes a three sixty loop. And does that sixty times in one second. So that's a sixty hertz. What the harmonics does, it throws a, they call it the third harmonic on there, they take that three times sixty. So all of a sudden, you got, that sine wave goes from sixty hertz to a hundred and eighty hertz. And what that does, it distorts it. And when you start it, it heats up, it heats up your windings. It'd be like you, for instance, your heart rate. You know, you got your heart rate. You get on a treadmill, you start running, what happens to it? Starts beating up, next thing you know, you're sweating, you're getting hot. So, and after a while, you either give out, or you, so it's basically what a transformer does. The more the harmonics, it, that sine wave increases, heats up.
Oh, what we're trying to do is, is approving these three, thank you, I like that.
There's an extra big, fair, nice application, and it's water.
I think I have to do it, I already, I see.
I got the motion of.
Oh, already, that's right. There's a motion for me, I don't have a second, I don't think.
I have a second.
Oh, so. All in favor? Uh, I, I oppose.
We're good, uh, we're good. And the last thing, it's, I didn't get, I just got it, uh, I didn't get a chance to put it on there. Need to approve the IMPA yearly dues. Nine thousand seventy-six dollars and fifty-eight cents. This goes to IMPA, Indiana Municipal Electric Association. That's our yearly dues, our yearly dues is actually sixty-three twenty-one oh five, and then our, they do our safety meetings. And they do our safety schooling for our linemen, which we got three of them in right now. That's twenty-seven fifty-five fifty-three, for a total of nine thousand seventy-six dollars and fifty-eight cents, is the yearly, uh, fee we pay.
Have a motion to accept that? Go ahead, take it. No say. All in favor? I oppose. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, any questions on electric?
That's good.
Really?
Gary. But I'm not the one running thirty feet of that pipe.
Exactly. And you can make sure you hit the other part.
Yeah, not running through the other one.
Good news.
No.
What's hard? Our high demand day, uh, was made in six hundred and forty-six thousand, that's roughly three hundred thousand less than last month, by Lindsay Kirkland. High production day was made in sixty-seven thousand. And that was pretty well up for the filter plant, other than, I was talking to RG Mechanical, they come in and sort of. They come in and certify our reduced pressure zone valves every other year. And having a lot of trouble with them, they would put in when the filter plant was new. So I've got them looking in to replace them one or maybe both. And then put the bypass in, so whenever they work on one, they don't have to shut the whole connect down and then we do that. Um, distribution in, I've got seven leaks listed that we had. And the vast majority of those, you can go back and see what they're doing on Main Street. They shut a valve or change the direction of flow somewhere or another that's causes leaks. So all those are settled down after we get Main Street back into service. The one leak on Fourth Street, um, we dug down to that. I don't know if any of you knew that we repaired that leak on Fourth Street. But the street department did a very good job putting bricks back, can't hardly tell where they were. But what that was, was whenever they compacted the rock, they put a bunch of vibration on the cord stop and it started leaking around its threads and it gets worse and worse and worse and worse. So we had to go down there and put a saddle over the top of it and replace the cord stop. We had also cut a hole in the service lines. We had to put, request section service line. And then one leak that's not listed, last Friday night, we had a leak on First Street. So we had eight leaks altogether this last month. Most of those settled down after we get Main Street finished. We moved, we moved an old service line at the corner of Main and First Street. Didn't go anywhere anymore, so there's no point leaving it in there. They poured some concrete back where they changed service line at Stein camps. And then the ash borer has been hitting the trees pretty hard out of the filter plant we've cut. And then also maybe we've done it to bolt there. The vast majority of the trees are doing their ashes that the ash borer has killed. And they have picked a lot of road is up and called on something or somebody we've been, like they're cutting down. Um, and then in the spare time, whenever we moved all the drives down to the high service plant building, they took about half that floor out. And we noticed there wasn't any reinforcing in that floor and it wasn't finished that well anyway. So my guys went down there and took the rest of that floor out and we pulled the whole floor whenever we replaced what's in there. The new measuring system, I've got on there that it's working real well. We opened up the computer this morning and had seventeen fails. We got a hold of census and we've had that before and it's always been radio interference. Someone's bleeding over into our radio signal waves. They go in, find out who it is and since ours is licensed of frequency, they tell them to get out and they do. And then everything straightens back up. So, uh, census is going to get on that, find out where the interference is coming from again. Uh, we just did get the, uh, two hundred and fifty, last two hundred and fifty, or the next two hundred and fifty meters in. So we can start the installation on year five. We have the radios already. On the upgrades, uh, we'll start off with distribution. All the old mains have been cut loose. All the new mains are in service. Most of the concrete has been poured back. Right now they're up at Stein camps repairing that. Uh, they have the little section of sidewalk down by the chestnut and Main Street that has to be repaired. Um, the mains north of the railroad tracks have been filled with grout. That way as the mains lot out, they can't, uh, create a suckhole, start filling with dirt. And they have that to do between Sixth and the railroad tra, or Sixth and, the railroad track and Fifth Street actually. And then there's two blocks on the south end that they'll have to do after the, the Second Street replaced. Restoration work will be completed as the weather permits. Uh, they're working at changing Second Street, the crossing there, whenever we went underneath that main, they broke in two places. We started looking at the condition of that pipe and that was the first change order that we did to the water system was to replace that crossing at two thirty-one. Because if that went bad, we'd still be digging up a brand of work. Um, and then they have Fourteenth Street to do. We've changed the design on Fourteenth Street. So it will not affect that property that's going to be closed on in February. Our water main will go underneath the sidewalk the entire way. Which should give clearance for wastewater to come in there. There's ten foot separation requirement for that. And we should, if we stay where we've got designed, wastewater should have room to put theirs in and stay in city use. So everything will stay in the street right away. And then on the filter plant, they started the flocculators last week. And Tumka is in here to try to start or get ready to start performing filters. And they're hoping by the end of the week, we'll be producing clear water out of the new filters. And then early part of next week, after the filter, after those four filters run for two days, making good water, we'll shut down the other side. The reconstruction will start on the other side. Um, they poured the last of the holding basins down there. Two of the drying beds have had the concrete runners poured in, so all that's left is a little bit of media in between the runners. And the last of the chemical feed pumps will be started out this week. Toric will be here tomorrow and Thursday to start tying all the computer work in. And then as soon as the filter's running, we'll shut down the existing side and start on that. Solar field is pretty well complete. The racking has been set, rock's been placed, the panels are in place. The inverters have been installed. Uh, what they have left to do is pretty well go from that disconnect to John's, uh, transformer. Um, and it should be ready for a test run, year end part of February. And that's what I've got. John went over that power purchase agreement. And I assume you guys will authorize me to sign that and send it up to EMA so we can get all of that underway. That's approved. Any questions on any of that?
That's good.
The meters, you know, phase five, how many do you think you have left in the city?
We have five, about five thirty if I remember. We ordered the two fifty to start it. So there ought to be about somewhere between two hundred and eighty and three hundred left to order. Um, sometime this year to finish up. And that will convert everything two inch and under. And then at some point, most of our big meters, we have calibrated anyway, so we know where they're at. When I lose money on them, it would just be a point of either converting them to where they will reach the solar, uh, to the census system or replace the new ones. Forgive me.
Uh, main and chestnut?
Main and chestnut. When are they going to run?
Does it sound off there or something?
Yeah, that, they are supposed to be completely finished by the end of February. So, um, I don't know at what point, I'm sure they're going to want to pour that with some of the other concrete that needs to be poured and that always got left at Stein camp showing. Whenever the weather fares up or they can pour that, I'm pretty sure they'll go up and pour that last sixty feet somewhere.
Yeah, I understand what you're asking.
I will pass that along and.
They want to ride that bike. They want to ride, they ride their bikes.
I understand. And it's a bad place because.
They don't want to be in the highway.
You have kids that walk through there to go to school and ride the bikes to school. I will pass that along that we're starting to. Get some feedback on that.
So did I, yeah, did I understand, you're going to redo a pipe between Second and Main? Is that, you're going to dig across and replace that?
We're going to dig across Second Street. That was approved in a change order that we did about three months ago. Because we found out the pipe is rotten there. And rather than leave something to blow up after they repaved, it was determined that we need to replace that pipe.
They didn't start on it like last year.
They started on it and they found out they were getting waters from the south end. So they had to go down to First Street and do a cut and cap to get the water off of them to replace that. Um, and they finished that about a little bit before noon. I thought maybe they'd go up to Second Street, but I guess starting in such a late hour, they'd rather start in the morning so it can get more accomplished. They're hoping to dig halfway across the first day and then plate that back. And then the next day, start there and go across. So they can keep two thirty-one open. You can't close two thirty-one obviously, so. I assume that's what they're doing, but anything else?
Contact us.
Contact us.
Yes, thanks, Gary. Appreciate it.
Have a great evening.
Bill.
I ask John a question. Do you find out any more about the net metering?
Presentation. I have a question. We have the street fund question, but possibly should they report to the city office or the hall street fund? I have a call. I've talked to Jason. I don't know if you want to see what that's. Go ahead if it doesn't happen. Uh, yeah. You can try that on forty thirty. No, I don't have. Uh, all right. I have an order item. Uh, I want to say a lunch.
What's your question?
I'll say it. All in favor? Uh, opposed?